We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Ellis.
Here.
Counselor Day.
Here.
Counselor Stokes.
Here.
Counselor Holloway. Do I have a call?
Okay. At this time, do we have a motion to...oh, excuse me. We want to do the amendment for Mr. Rogers' comments before I forget about that.
Well, first you gotta...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I gotta let you in, Ms. Stokes. Yeah, can I have a motion to allow Counselor Stokes to participate remotely?
Seven.
Second.
All right. Is there...excuse me. Ms. Stokes, for the record, can you state where you're conducting the meeting from and why you're asking to participate remotely?
I'm at home and for health reasons.
Okay. All right. Seeing no lights for discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay. At this time, is there a motion to amend the agenda to allow the city manager's comments before communications from citizens?
Seven.
All right. Motion's been made by Counselor Day and seconded by Counselor Ellis. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights for...oh, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I have a question. Is there any way that this can be a standing motion since we do it every meeting?
Sorry. Unfortunately, under the rules as they are, that's currently not possible. That's something that's going to be discussed when we discuss the potential rules change to the council rule.
Okay. Yes.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right. At this time, is there a motion to go into closed meeting under Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A 29 and 8 to discuss the award of a public contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the city's bargaining position and to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters, real estate contract discussions, unsolicited offer on city-owned real estate? All right. Motion's been made by Counselor Ellis, seconded by Counselor Day. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights. Roll call, please.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Counselor Ellis, seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Stokes. Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
He's back there. He said, "Yes."
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Okay. Certification, please.
Certification per se to Virginia Code 2.2-3712B where only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements and to identify and include the meeting motion discussed in the closed meeting.
All right. Roll call.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
All right. We're going to go ahead and recess, and we will re-join at seven o'clock. We are coming back from our recess, and we will move right into our work session. And our first one for tonight is with Chief Rupert.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight to discuss the change of our EMS service rates. As you know, just coming out of the budget process relatively recently, you understand the fiscal challenges that we have as a community and also being sensitive to the needs of our constituents and the burden that they also are bearing when it comes to the raising of costs in all different areas. We considered all that as we put together a proposal to look at the fees that we charge for our EMS services. So, we...I actually will go ahead one slide because I think that'll help talk about it, and then I'll go back a little bit. You can see here on the left-hand side, the fiscal year payer mix. This shows a mix of how people pay for our services. So, if you notice, the lion's share of that is Medicare, followed closely behind by Medicaid. And then there's a number of other different insurances and third-party pairs with the patient themselves being only about 8.6% of the people that we're charging fees to. And so, only about 8.6% of those that we run and provide service, do they pay out of pocket for the services that we provide. On the right, you see the breakdown of the type of services that we provide. So, the biggest by a significant margin is BLS services, followed by ALS services, and then ALS II, which is basically a higher level of ALS service requiring some significant in-depth treatment or care. So, going back, our cost for operations...I'm sorry?
What do those acronyms stand for?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, BL...Basic Life Support and Advanced Life Support. I apologize for that.
That's okay.
So, fees...these fees, as you know through the budget process, go to support apparatus purchases. And as we discussed as part of the budgeting process, the cost of apparatus has literally exploded since 2020. In some cases, a 50% increase in cost. And so, these...the fees that we receive through our EMS services are the lion's share of what goes into the account, as we discussed, to basically allow us to pay the leases that we will be using to purchase our vehicles. Just as a reminder, a new ambulance lease payment on an annual basis is about $88,000. That's the projected. We haven't got the final yet. And then, new engines, which we will need to be purchasing too, is $228,000 apiece. So, this is a significant cost. And so, finding the revenue to support that is very important. It's only been a week ago that we went down an ambulance. We only had two ambulances in the street for three or four days because of the issue with maintenance and repairs. And so...and right now, we're down an engine because, you know, we've been struggling with getting one of our primary units back in service. And so, replacing this apparatus is huge and very important to us, but the costs, obviously, are tremendous. And so, finding a way to pay for that has been a challenge in the past, and so, we've identified these EMS funds as a way to do that. We would like to bolster that by looking at how we can increase that revenue. We don't want to burden our citizens significantly more than they already are based on the other challenges that they have to pay for all the other things that prices have gone up on a number of different things. And so, really, the target audience here, honestly, is insurance companies. We actually charge less than Medicare allows, and we're below all of our...all of our...the surrounding jurisdictions as far as our fees are concerned. And so, what we would like to do is...and this is a table here showing where our fees currently are. The first column there shows what Medicare allows us to charge for those services. Then you see that the column in red is where we currently are. And then, there's two options there for you all to look at as far as how we can charge going forward. What we would...what we'd like to propose as far as the change to the ordinance is actually a percentage of Medicare allowable. And what that does is that allows us to make adjustments to our fee schedule based on how the federal government adjusts their fee schedule. So, as they increase the amount that we can charge for their services, we then can in turn make that change without having to come back to you on an annual basis and request those changes. We can put that in as 135%. And again, the 135% is because a number of private insurers will pay significantly more than Medicare. And so, if we charge less than that, then we're essentially leaving money on the table where a number of our insurers will pay more than what we're charging, and so, we're leaving that money sitting in their pockets where that could be revenue that we could be enjoying to help with the costs that we have. So, those are the two options that I'm presenting to you, and those are the options that were given to us by our billing company that they said made the most sense based on those around us and the costs that you see in this area.
Chief Rupert, Counselor Holloway have a question for you on that last slide.
Sure.
I was actually just gonna make a comment that it seems like that's definitely a no-brainer. I was gonna ask if...let's see. Can you go back a slide? So, the cost...the percentages here, you're talking about going after the...all of those who are short of not paying out of pocket, those patients who pay completely out of pocket. Their costs, would they also kind of like be the same, but they would get...like, for example, if you go to the hospital and you're paying out of pocket, the persons who pay out of pocket get a 40% discount, for example? So, is the thought to have the prices the same for everybody, and then the person who gets out of pocket gets a percentage off? Or will you just leave the pricing the same for the people who pay out of pocket?
So, the pricing will remain the same, but I do want to talk to you at the end...after this next slide, I did want to talk to you about two ways that we're providing relief to the citizens. And we'll kind of get to exactly what you're talking about here in just a minute.
Perfect.
So, just to give you an idea of what we're talking about as far as increases are concerned, and this is, you know, obviously, a projection from our billing company. You know, obviously, this may not be 100% accurate, but this just gives you an idea. If we increased it to 150% of Medicare allowable, we could be looking at approximately $45,000 increase annually. If we increase it by 135% of Medicare allowable, we'd be looking at about $26,000. And of course, obviously, this is going to fluctuate based on our call volume and all those kind of things, but this is just some general numbers to give you an idea of what we would be looking at as far as increases. So, two ways that we want to be able to provide relief to our citizens, and especially, as you indicated, the folks that are in that self-pay category. The first is our Ridesaver program. So, this is a program that actually we currently have. We've already had that program. And currently, we charge $59 for this...for an annual fee. And anyone that resides at that household, so if you...as long as, you know, anybody that lives at your household, even if you have, you know, grandchildren that live there with you, or whatever the case is, as long as that's their address, then all of the people in that household would be covered by that $69...well, it was $59 a year. And essentially, for that annual...for that annual period, if you get a call, you call us for services, we're not going to bill you for anything. Now, if you do have insurance, we will build the insurance company, but we will not be charging you any of the copays or any of the...any of the fees that would be associated with their side of the bill. As well as if you are a self-payer, you know, there would be no cost to you at all. You're not going to see a bill for us. So, that's a...that's an annual cost of $59. We're proposing that that goes to $69. And that...what that does is when they do provide...they sign up and they pay the fee, we also collect all their insurance information. And that's very helpful for us because one of the challenges, obviously, with collecting revenue in this type of environment is, as you can imagine, people are in an emergency. We're trying to get insurance information from them. Sometimes, that's easy to do. Sometimes, it's not so easy to do. And so, it's very beneficial for us to have that information on file so that if we do need to give them services, we have that information, and we can build our insurance company. The second thing that we have added as part of this package to bring to you tonight is a hardship policy. Basically, this is a...this is a way for people to apply for relief from the cost of the EMS services. And the discount is based on the National Health and Human Services poverty level guidelines. And so, there's a...there's an annual guideline that's published every year that shows what level poverty is and then gives percentages and allows people to, you know, you can determine where they are on that poverty level based on the number of people in their household and their income. Basically, if someone were to like to utilize this, they would fill out an application where they would indicate what their...the size of their household as well as their total annual income for the household. And then, based on that, we would provide them with a discount on their...on their services. So, anybody that would be at the poverty line or below would obviously not pay anything. They would get 100% discount. And then, going up by percentage point, moving up through the percentages, at 200% of poverty, which is where the social services, usually, they're cut off for any benefit, is around that 200% mark. That's where they would be at a 50%. They would get a 50% discount on the services. And then, above that, up to 300%. 300% is actually where the mean income level for the city is. It would be, you know, a gradually reducing percentage. So, I think the last percentage that shows on the chart for Health and Human Services is 275%. And they'd be getting a 12.5% reduction in their overall bill. And at 300%, they would get...they would be responsible for the entire bill. So, this is a way for people who are struggling or are in need of relief can provide a, you know, provide an application to us. We could process that. And then, it's important to note that we would still have to accurately...so, to the federal government, we would have to report the total amount that we would charge for those services. However, we would show it at a...that we would provide them with a discount. And so, we would provide them with a discount. We'd zero out the account for them, but it would still represent a total cost as far as our reporting is concerned. Any questions?
No questions, it looks like, from council. But I will say that I like the idea of the options that you guys are providing to provide some relief to folks. And, you know, almost a quasi-insurance policy, you know, on that Rider...
Ridesavers.
Yeah. Program. I think that's wonderful, and that's great for all ages, you know, from, you know, the itty-bitties all the way to the senior citizens. So, I really do appreciate you guys, you know, and your creativity and thinking outside the box to help our citizens. Counselor Holloway?
Yeah. Definitely on that, looking at about $625 billion in ten years being cut from Medicaid. What the Karen Big Beautiful Bill that just passed. So, you're talking about a billion and a half dollars leaving from Virginia in that form. So, we're definitely going to have to have stuff in place when it comes to that because you're talking about the cost of things going up, but then losing even more money in that perspective. So, thank you for that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to our next work session, Mr. Ward. And while he's getting ready, do I have a motion to extend the meeting until we finish R2?
Oh, no. Just kidding.
All right. Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Counselor Holloway. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights. Roll call, please.
Counselor Stokes.
Yes.
Counselor Ellis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Counselor Day.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Mr. Ward.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I have two conditional use permits for you at this work session. The first one is a request to construct a single-family dwelling on non-conforming lot parcel 042-0475 located on Spruce Street. The applicant and the owner of the property are the same. It's Baptiste Development LLC. The property's located in Ward 6 and zoned R4. Got a map here showing an aerial view, also a zoning map and a general location map on the bottom right. Basically, a vacant lot right now that's the neighbors used to park cars on. The minimum lot size in R4 is 50 feet wide and 5,000 square feet. This particular parcel is 55 feet wide, but it's not as deep, so it's only at 3,795 square feet. So, the nonconformity is in the total square footage. The applicant's proposing to build a two-story house. It's a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, 1,440 square feet. You can see the front elevation here and then also the rear. And then, the left and the right elevation proposed house. Again, some floor plans, the elevations. The proposed dwelling is larger than the average single-family dwelling in this neighborhood, which the average is 1,022 square feet. The applicant's proposing vinyl siding, which is consistent with the other homes. And this will meet all district setbacks. So, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with the following conditions: that it will have 12-inch minimum eaves along all roof edges, minimum tree canopy coverage of 20%, driveway of asphalt or concrete, brick or stone foundation on all four sides, along with foundation plantings in the front. And essentially, that this house will be in substantial conformance with these plans that are presented to you with any final modifications you may have when we go to public hearing. Planning Commission recommends approval, four to zero. They did not recommend any changes to the conditions. And we have not received any public comment whatsoever on this application, and I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Can you go back to the slide? I was just...you had stopped short of that planting.
Yep.
Number four. Number five.
It's like shrubbery.
Yeah. So, this is something that the owners, you're saying, has to keep there?
They would have to install.
Install plants? Why is this a thing?
Aesthetics, storm drainage, found, you know, landscaping assists with storm drainage as well. So, those two things, those two. This has been within the conditions for quite some time. This is not new to this application, I think, is my point.
I knew that was like the case when it came to commercial, but not housing. When it came to, like, people housing to have to put trees in front of houses. That was interesting.
Yeah.
It's with the conditional use permit. I mean, the feeling is, is that they're asking special permission to build on a lot that doesn't conform so we can add conditions that elevate the house essentially and the property. Just like all the rest of these are not required if you have...you can build by right.
Right. Right. Correct. I was just trying to figure out what...how did an aesthetics...what did planning do?
Landscaping does assist with storm drainage.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing no more lights. Moving on to number three.
So, again, we have another conditional use permit application for the same single-family dwelling, non-conforming lot. This one relates to parcel 067-0065 located on Delaware Avenue. The applicant is George Fetteko. He also owns the property. And this particular lot is located in Ward 2 and zoned R3. You can see the aerial here with the zoning map and the...showed the ward map, actually, on the bottom right. So, for R3, minimum lot standards are 50 feet wide and 5,000 square feet. This particular lot is only 40 feet wide and 4,000 square feet. So, the nonconformity is in both the width and the total square footage. The applicant's proposing to construct a one-story, single-family dwelling that's a three-bedroom, two-bath, 1,232 square feet. Again, front elevation, rear elevation, both sides. And floor plan. Again, this one is larger just slightly than the other properties in the neighborhood. Again, vinyl siding, which is consistent, and it's going to meet all the district setbacks. These are the...these are the same recommended conditions that we had on the one prior to this. So, I don't feel a need to go through them individually again. We're all quite familiar with them. Planning Commission recommends approval of this application. They recommended four to zero. And we did not receive any public comments. I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Not a question, but more of a comment.
Yes.
It's just exciting to see that, you know, folks are, you know, interested in building homes here, and the homes are bigger than, you know, the average size, you know, which, you know, is a, you know, great indicator that we have for, you know, working towards, you know, getting our bond rating back.
I agree. And we've got some good...we've got some real nice-looking houses coming to you next month as well.
All right. Seeing no lights. Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Howard and team.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, City Manager, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ulysses Jack Howard. I am the managing partner with DBS Public Affairs Group. On behalf of my business partners who are here with me, Ida McPherson and Rich Williams, we're honored to be able to utilize our over 75 years of combined experience in Virginia State Government in legislative affairs and in public policy to provide legislative liaison services for the city of Hopewell during the 2025 Virginia General Assembly Session, as well as at the federal government level in Washington, DC. Out of those 75 years, I think Rich and I probably got about 65 of those. Ida's a young lady, so she maybe have five. Want to get that straight with the lady. We are happy to be able to provide you all with this update as we continue to prepare for the next General Assembly Session and as we continue to advocate for public policy initiatives at the state and federal government level that will benefit the city of Hopewell and its residents. We've already provided you all with a nine-page, comprehensive written report in advance. Now, I'd like to introduce my business partners, who will come forward to give you all a brief update on our state and federal efforts. And then, we'll be available for any questions that you guys may have. First coming up is my colleague, Ida McPherson, who will give you an update on our lobbying efforts at the state government level. And then, after Ida, Rich Williams will come up and give an update on our federal lobbying efforts. Ida?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Again, I'm Ida McPherson. Certainly a pleasure to be here with you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor. Congratulations, City Attorney, on the new appointment here, and welcome to interim City Manager and the members of the City Council. First, I want to say it's been quite an honor for us to represent the city of Hopewell during the past legislative session. And the city originally had a legislative agenda list that was composed of 32 items. In planning sessions, we narrowed that down to six very specific things that you wanted us to highlight during this past General Assembly Session. And they included a realignment of the Treasury's duties, the oxygen plant replacement, support for homelessness and mental health, the penny tax, the incineration rehab, and electric expansion. As we moved forward through this past General Assembly Session, what I wanted to share with you is that, obviously, we came aboard a little late and right before the session started. started, but nonetheless, one of the things that we did do is we made everyone at the General Assembly very much aware of the fact that the city of Hopewell was making significant accomplishments in terms of internal structuring, as well as a lot of projects that were going on, that Members of the General Assembly did not appear to be quite aware of to the extent that we thought that they should be. During this session, there were three bills that were introduced. Delegate Kanye introduced a bill that related to a charter change. While we subsequent, as a part of working with the Treasurers Association, as well as with staff here, we were able to develop a great relationship with the Treasurers Association and with city staff to talk about ways that you would be able to do those changes without having to have a charter amendment, and obviously, with the city attorney on board, he's aware of the fact that there are some additional things that can be done without actually going in and requesting a charter change. So I think we're certainly moving in the right direction in that regard. In fact, the penny tax out of Prince William County passed both the Senate and the House, but was not enacted during this General Session. We're looking forward to the upcoming session and working with you on a new legislative agenda and bringing forward some of the items that you had on the past agenda. But what I do want to say, and I think is most important about this past session, is that we believe our team, we knocked on doors, we met with Members of the Senate, the Appropriations Committee, the senior leadership in terms of the House and the Senate, and I believe that the whole picture of the city of Hopewell has been raised tremendously. So I like to put it this way, I think for the city, we painted and presented a new positive, very, very positive portrait of the city of Hopewell and highlighted all of the good things that you're doing. As a result of that, we believe we laid such a tremendous ground floor for this upcoming session, and we just look forward to working with you as we move forward to get some bills passed this coming session. Thank you very much. And this is Mr. Rich Williams on our federal side.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. City Manager. I hope everyone had a safe and a happy Fourth of July weekend. I had a wonderful time fishing and crabbing myself. A brief update on our federal activities. We are very, working very closely with Senator Warner, Senator Kane, and Congress, and Jennifer McClellan on your four top priority federal issues. They are one point seven million for the city heritage avenue flood mitigation project, one million for the Hopewell Police Department's citywide technology upgrades, one point two million for the Hopewell community center project update, and one point seven million for the Hopewell citywide pump station improvement projects. We are in close contact with our federal partners, and they are very well aware of your needs and concerns in Hopewell. We are available for any questions you might have, because I know time is of essence right now. Thank you very much.
Not necessarily just a question, but just kind of, you know, just making sure that we just don't lose sight of it. You know, with regards to the wastewater treatment plant and, you know, our riverfront development, you know, appropriation requests, I really, I think we need to make sure that we, you know, reemphasize this again like we did this year, and, you know, that we exhibit the progress, you know, that the city has made in terms of our audits, and then also in addition to that, you know, the implementation of, you know, the internal controls, you know, that we passed. I think we did those, you know, post General Assembly Session, and, you know, maybe ask, we can get a meeting with, you know, the money chairs and see if, you know, they may be willing to, you know, come down here.
Sure.
And, and look, and, you know, actually, you see for themselves, you know, the progress that we're making.
Right, we certainly could make those types of introductions. I was with Senator Lucas about three or four days ago. I talked about Hopewell specifically again. Obviously, as you know, she's Chair of Appropriations Committee. One of the things that we did this past session is that we had your Department of Economic Development to highlight the return on investment, okay, from the Riverwalk Expansion Project, and that was important because I think they were not quite aware of what the money would do other than beautify their area, so we wanted to make sure that they understood what the monetary value was to the Marina area in general, the jobs that it would produce. We developed some slides along with your staff that were presented to them. We left those handouts, and I think we need to do more and more of that. Vice Mayor Joyner joined us at the General Assembly. That was extremely beneficial, and as we do more of that and we highlight the city, again, all we've done for the past year has been just talk about Hopewell, 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 so now when they see us coming, it's not about anything else that we do other than here they come. They want money, they want money for Hopewell, and we intend to deliver on that. But certainly, in terms of making those introductions and having them come here, as well as having more Members of the Council go with us to Richmond for visits, that's certainly going to be very helpful.
Mr. Mayor, in our inner-year report, post General Assembly Report, what you just suggested is one of our recommendations, that we invite the leaders of the state here to come here, Speaker of the House, Senator Louise Lucas, and other decision makers. Invite them here, Don Scott, the Speaker, all of them, invite them here, let them come here in all session time, meet you all, see the progress you're making. I know you're making, you've got the BOP group doing some other big things financially, so they need to know what's happening, so yeah.
Very specifically, because I know that that was a very big issue. I mean, it wasn't just, you know, with the governor's administration, but it was with also, you know, the money chairs.
Absolutely.
That, you know, they were very concerned about, you know, the financial picture for the city, you know, what our cash balances were, and, you know, to actually, you know, bring them here, show them that. I know Stacy is, Ms. Jordan is, you know, going to, you know, work on a really good financial report for us next month that's going to show a lot of these highlights, and I think, you know, taking, you know, that information she produces for us and showing it to them, I think is going to pay some big dividends.
And luckily for us, we're in a position where we go way back with a number of those folks. In fact, the Senate Chair of Appropriations Committee, Senator Louise Lucas. My colleague here, Rich Williams, thirty years ago, he was her es- he was our escort to a presidential inauguration, so that's how far back we go. Now, that was a long time ago before he got married.
That's where the bulk of that seventy-five years is coming from.
Yeah, there you go. So between her and then, of course, on the House side, we've got Luke Torian, who's Chair of the House Appropriations Committee, which we all know well. So we've got some relationships there, yeah, we'd love to invite them down here.
And I think all of you know that we all have served in government before and have served, I think, combined under six governors. We know the lay of the land in Richmond very, very well, and we are very proud to be able to say that we hold a good reputation for following up on what we say we're going to do, and I think we have a high level of integrity as far as our company is concerned. So I'd like to say I believe that you're in good hands, and I also like to say that Ms. Kelly, First City's Commissioner, was very, very helpful too, because she was always, you know, we were always engaged, and she was always talking about Hopewell as a great resource, so we appreciate that as well.
I had Counsel Holloway and then Vice Mayor Joyner.
I had put my, I put my light on right before the mayor of making those comments. I was going to push on those same comments. So again, thank you for your hard work and dedication. I also love it because when I was in a meeting with Representative, our Congresswoman, she said that one of the things before Hopewell just was not at the table, and we missed out on quite a bit of funding prior to just for Hopewell not being at the table. So this tremendously makes a big difference for the city of Hopewell, so whereby I'm definitely excited and glad about that. Thank you so very much.
I want to tell you, my colleague, Ida, wouldn't exaggerate, when they see us coming, sometime we hear my name, and they'll be, oh, here they come again, Hopewell again. Because that's our job. We intend that we're going to try to advocate. We, it was, just yesterday, I think it was in the paper, where we are advocating for Hopewell on every level, economic development. We've got all these relationships. I personally have had the honor and privilege of being a pointee to work for four governors, and just happened to be, I don't, it just worked out that way in my career. Two of them were Democrats and two were Republicans. So Ida is very active on the Republican side, know a lot of people, so we need to have both sides covered, because you know how Virginia is cyclical politically. You know, you may have Republicans control one time, then Democrats, so we have relationships on both sides, and that bodes well for the city, so.
Thanks so very much for your time.
All right, thank you again. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I had the privilege of going up to Richmond, seeing these folks in action. We visited, we did knock on a lot of doors the times that I went up there, and I also want to speak to the fact that you mentioned the ROI's, you know, and when we are going as a city, we are basically marketing our, you know, you have to market yourself to these people. This, you know, we can't just write a letter and say, oh, please give us money. You have to present, and so we presented, I think, a very powerful, you know, set of facts and information on the Riverwalk, and that was, that was submitted by Senator Ayer. It was a last-minute sort of addition to the, to the legislative agenda, and I think that that has a very good chance of getting some attention this year, but, you know, it is something that you've got to go up and you have to have confidence, and you have to, you have to give a good, solid presentation, and I think we learned that this past year, and I echo Counsel Holloway's comments that Hopewell has not been at the table for many, many years, and we're very honored to have DBS representing us, and I'm certainly impressed, and thank you all for all the hard work you've done over the last year. All right, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
All right, we're going to roll right into our regular meeting. This time can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Here.
Counsel Harris.
Here.
Counsel Ellis.
Here.
Counsel Day.
Here.
Counsel Stokes.
Here.
Counsel Holloway.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll have the prayer by Pastor Harville, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag by myself. Please rise.
Good evening. Let us bow for a word of prayer. Holy and gracious God, Creator of all that is, giver of life, we come in these moments together, thanking you and praising you for the precious gift of another day. Lord, we come humbly, needy, wanting you to intervene in our lives and our city. Lord God, we come acknowledging your presence, acknowledging that you have all power and we do not. Lord God, I thank you for those in authority in this city. God, I pray for City Council, I pray for the law enforcement community, I pray for the firefighters, ambulance personnel, first responders. Lord, we pray for our military, brothers and sisters right here in our own backyard. Lord, we pray for all of our military, all those wearing the uniform of the United States anywhere across this globe. Oh, Lord, put your angels in a hedge of protection around them. Lord God, our heart breaks as we see the news out of Texas. Lord, we look at the beautiful river on the edge of our city, oh, God, and we can't even imagine the horror that those folks have gone through. Lord, I pray for those searching, I pray for those grieving, I pray for those missing. I pray for those who fear their lives, their families, and their community will never be the same. Send people to minister to them, oh, God. I thank you for those who've traveled far and wide to be there to help, to donate a dollar, to do what they can, or just to pray. So, Lord God, we ask that you would bless our city, surround us with protection, oh, God. We pray, oh, Lord, for wisdom and decision-making. Lord, there are decisions made in this room about how dollars are spent, about how problems get solved, and, oh, God, I pray that every decision would be made from a humble heart, from a heart that is seeking what's best for this city. Lord, we may not always agree across the lines about what truly is the best path forward, the best decision to make, but God, I pray that even when we disagree, that we would be respectful, that we would seek to honor you in what we do, oh, God, for others are watching, there are eyes watching us. So, God, I pray for every aspect of this city, from the smallest child to the oldest senior citizen, from those who feel the most powerful to those who feel the most weak. Lord, I pray for the marginalized, for those who feel like their voice has not been heard. May we hear them, oh, God. For those who have felt invisible, may we see them, oh, God. Lord, we pray that you would help each of us in our different aspects, our different walks of life that we represent here in this place. May we do all we can to be the best citizens that we can possibly be, so that we can make our little corner of the world a better place. We pray for our nation and its leaders, we pray for our state and its leaders, we pray for local leaders, oh, God, that you would help us to see more clearly what you would have us do. We make our prayer in the blessed name of Jesus Christ, our risen Lord and Savior. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We've already amended the agenda for tonight. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? All right, motion's been made by Counsel Holloway and seconded by Vice Mayor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counsel Stokes.
Yes.
Counsel Ellis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counsel Holloway. Counsel Day.
Yes.
Motion passes, seven to zero.
All right, moving on to information presentations, Ms. Martinez.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I am pleased to introduce two proclamations today that reflect our commitment to the community well-being here in Hopewell. Firstly, we would like to designate July as Parks and Recreation Month here in Hopewell to correspond with the U.S. House Representatives twenty, two thousand and nine designation. This proclamation honors the invaluable role our parks and recreation facilities play in enriching the lives of our residents. They provide essential spaces for leisure, fitness, and connection, fostering a strong sense of community and promoting a healthy lifestyle for all. Furthermore, I'm excited to request that July eighteenth, twenty twenty-five be recognized as Parks and Recreation Professionals' Day. On this day, we will honor the dedicated professionals who work tirelessly, tirelessly, excuse me, behind the scenes to ensure our parks are safe, accessible, and vibrant spaces for everyone to enjoy. Their passion and commitment to our community are commendable, and on this day serves an opportunity to express our gratitude for their hard work, and we have a few of our staff members in the, in the audience tonight, and I hope that together we can celebrate the spirit of community through the great outdoors acknowledgement of the individuals who make our recreational opportunities possible. Thank you.
Counsel Holloway?
So does that mean they have a day off?
No, sir. No, sir, did not go that far, but we will be shutting down the Hopewell Community Center for about hour and a half to provide a luncheon for our all staff, and then we'll reopen the building, and of course, City Council, you're all invited to come join us and have some fellowship with us. Trying to figure out the meal now, so my staff will be bugging me in about the next two days.
I actually think that was a great thing. I think I said that the last time to you that a lot of times, well, even in a lot of departments, but some of the hard work, especially when it's hands-on, that goes on in the city, especially happening after business hours, and a lot of people do not see that, that is not to take away from all the other departments, of course, because everybody is working in the city, the departments are sometimes overworked, underpaid, as they say, but, again, I think this is a phenomenal thing. Now, what particular made y'all choose July the eighteenth?
So this was actually designated by the U.S. House of Representatives back in two thousand and nine. I'm not sure if my predecessor ever asked for City Council to do the entire month, so that's why I did it this year. Last year, I just asked for the day, and of course, that day always changes each year, which is why I'm getting it in front of you two this year.
Yeah, good. Thanks so very much.
You just want to go big and bold.
Yeah, I'm trying, you know, I'm trying to save y'all's time, and probably next year when I do this, I'll probably just ask for the third Friday to be recognized as, and then we could just skip it all every year. Does that sound like a plan?
As I tell folks with birthdays, why celebrate a whole, only a day when you can celebrate a month?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
At this time, is there a motion to approve the proclamation of July as Parks and Recreation Month and July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five as Park and Recreation Professionals' Day? All right, motion's been made by Counsel Day and seconded by Counsel Ellis. Is there- any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counsel Stokes.
Yes.
Counsel Ellis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counsel Holloway.
Yes.
Counsel Day.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you guys so much.
With my staff, I mean, they do all the hard work. I just get to represent them coming in before you all, so.
I think they deserve a round of applause.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Good News USA publication.
Chief Rupert and Chief Taylor's coming up with their, uh, with their date, uh, their month next.
Oh. Yeah, then public works.
Yeah, public works.
And it might end up being wastewater for a whole year once everything gets cleaned up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, um, city manager and the citizens of Hopewell. I am honored, humbled honored, to be here before you, um, to share some information regarding Good News USA newspaper. And I believe each of you have been given a copy of this publication. So who am I? Who are we? My name is Deion McWilliams and I am the owner, the editor-in-chief and publisher of Good News USA newspaper. Flavor News is the name of my company, which was started in two thousand and six. I am a native of Richmond, Virginia. Why am I here in Hopewell? My fiancee has been a resident of Hopewell for over forty years after leaving the military many years ago now. So I own a media company which is focused on positivity. In other words, good news. Our flagship newspaper highlights community achievements, milestones, unsung heroes, awareness, businesses, events. In other words, again, the good news. In September of twenty twenty-four, we celebrated our tenth year anniversary. However, it all began in twenty-ten when a seven-year-old little boy asked his grandmother to write a good news newspaper because all the bad news was scaring the kids. His name is Narian Jiggedson. Today, he serves in his country, the U.S. Navy. So the purpose of today's presentation is to introduce our partnership with a deserving city, Hopewell, Virginia. We're always looking for a deserving community city, um, that's in need of publicity. And it took my boyfriend or my fiancee to share with me not too long ago. He said, "Hopewell used to have a newspaper, but not any longer." And this light came on. And then the rest is pretty much history because I set out to do some research. I was in touch with the manager of the Appomattox Regional Library, Chris, and I asked him, "Do you mind if we add you all to our distribution list?" And he said, "Of course." Um, and then I received an email not too long ago, um, from Ginger Holland. And she told me she picked up the newspaper in the library and she wanted to schedule a meeting, um, with herself as well as Charles Bennett. And, um, we set off to develop, um, a partnership. In other words, once again, I want to feature all the good news that's taking place here in Hopewell, Virginia. Um, the billboard that you see there was one of my prayers. Um, I have, um, I've written this newspaper now. I started it with just twenty-two dollars to my name. I took the faith walk. I lost everything and I wanted to fulfill the wish of my grandson. So in September, a huge milestone, um, the newspaper appeared on numerous billboards in Richmond, also in Chesterfield County, and hopefully one day soon in Hopewell, Virginia. So most people would ask the question, "Why Hopewell? Why now?" And I would respond, "It's simple. Hopewell is truly a deserving city. Hopewell is filled with rich history, resilience and hometown pride. The city deserves a consistent, positive news platform. And I believe in celebrating all the good news once again throughout the community. All of us know there's enough bad news in the world, so I'm here to partner with you all to deliver the good news." The type of articles that we feature are uplifting personal and family stories. We also feature congratulatory messages and honors, school achievements and youth features. We also allow youth to join us. We have volunteer writers. Um, those who are aspiring to be media representatives are more than welcome to join us as well. We cover Hopewell history highlights. As a matter of fact, the paper comes out on a monthly basis, um, the fifteenth of every month. And on the front cover of the July fifteenth issue, I am happy to report that the first female EMS captain, Amber, will be, Hamel, will be featured on the front page of Good News USA. Um, we are looking to highlight business spotlights, grand openings, and it's very important to me for us to help businesses keep their doors open. Because I tell people, if I started this newspaper ten years ago with just twenty-two dollars, we all should be able to assist businesses in keeping their doors open. But the problem is, or one of the problems is, a lot of entrepreneurs are afraid to say, "I need help." And so I had to learn that even for myself. But being determined, the determined child, child of God that I am, I'm determined to keep this newspaper launched. So how does this benefit the city of Hopewell? Partnering with Flavor News or Good News USA newspaper will drive increased foot traffic, attract new visitors and create economic opportunities that generate additional revenue for the city of Hopewell through events, advertising partnerships and community-focused initiatives. Once again, I'm Deion McWilliams. I'm the editor-in-chief and owner of Good News USA newspaper. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Counsel Holloway?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions. I actually got the opportunity to see the Good News, uh, USA newspaper, um, in the library and then I actually got the chance to actually look through it in, uh, the Economic Developers' Office. And I think it is a phenomenal thing. Good News is always good news.
Yes, thank you.
It is something that is needed and, uh, so I appreciate your presentation and I thank you so much for all that you've done and answering the call, uh, to, to your grandson.
Thank you.
That is most, uh, the most beautiful thing when we, um, adhere the call to our children and our grandchildren.
Yes, sir.
Uh, to facilitate their positivity and, and growth in them, um, to surround them with that, that love and good news. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, Counsel Day?
Our grandchildren can be very big motivators to do things, definitely. But this is wonderful. I'm, this is great that, you know, you want to share this with the city of Hopewell. Um, I'm just glancing through it now and I really like this.
Thank you.
So thank you. Thank you for sharing and telling us about yourself and how this all got started. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much. Oh.
I just want to, I just want to reiterate that this has been a long time coming.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I get emotional. Thank you so much. I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're going to move into the city manager's comments.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just kind of following on the good news theme, I want to highlight Ginger Holland, who is our Public Information Officer, uh, who brought this to my attention and, uh, is working to make sure we distribute this paper in our own facilities, not just in the library, but in the, in the community center as well, in other locations. Because I think that, uh, the more we can get information out, particularly that's good, that's happening in the city, the better off, uh, we, we will be. And people will begin to have a different feeling, you know, about their own community and know that some good things are happening. At this time, I want to ask the chief to come forward and make his report. As we said at state at last meeting, we, we want to keep our focus on, on public safety. And the police department is doing an excellent job. And, and I think that we are focused on, on how we are handling and managing, you know, the, uh, issues in ten acts of emergency.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, hi, Vice Mayor, city manager, ladies and gentlemen of city council. I'm here to present the, uh, July crime report for the city of Hopewell. And my first slide is, uh, violent crime total. And it is from twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five, violent crime, we had a total of forty. In twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five, we had forty-eight, uh, an increase of eight. And I want to focus on that, uh, the robberies. And the robberies that you see the increase on were not business robberies or commercial robberies, individual robberies of persons, from telephones, bicycles, uh, when vehicles stolen at gunpoint. So it was a variety of property-related crimes that increased these robbery. And fortunately, we have, I had success in making arrests on them as well. So total, uh, increase in violent crimes is twenty percent. As you go into the property crimes, uh, fortunately, I, I like to see that decrease in larcenies. We got a minus seventeen percent in total, uh, larcenies and a total decrease in twelve percent. And also it's very fortunate to see that decrease in motor vehicle thefts. Because last year we were getting hit pretty hard with motor vehicle thefts with the Hyundai's and Kia's and, and those types of products. And we still have little problems, but it's a lot better. And because of that, uh, motor vehicle thefts and the, uh, larcenies, uh, property crime decrease is twenty-seven percent, which is good news. And our total major crime for this reporting period is, uh, minus twenty percent. So property crimes is down twenty-seven percent and total major crime is down twenty percent. Next slide. The, uh, opiate offenses. Uh, I'm glad to still be able to report to you all that over the last five years, we're still seeing a decrease in fatal, non-fatal and, and total of twenty-three. So that's the lowest we've been having in five years. And I hope that those numbers continue to decrease. There's verified shots fired. Uh, twenty-twenty-four, we had twenty-five. Twenty-twenty-five, we had thirty-one, uh, six more. Uh, we're officers, uh, when they get to the scene, they gather as much evidence as they can. We get out the vehicles, we knock on doors, they try to get as much information on these, uh, shots fired and do what we can, as much as we can, to, uh, catch the offender or offenders responsible. And as we move forward, you know, we've got earmarks coming, more technology to help us to, uh, be able to focus on these shots fired and, and increase the find these offenders and reducing these number of shots fired in the city. You can skip that one. Uh, hiring and recruitment. Uh, currently, right now, we have eleven sworn vacancies, police officer vacancies. Uh, two new, well, let me back up on the eleven sworn vacancies. And I just want to thank city council for the increase in pay. That Rida has helped us to be competitive in the job market. And we're seeing more applicants coming in. And as I go along, you'll, we'll see that, you know, we, we are hiring. And also we have, uh, two new dispatcher positions, uh, that have been approved and we're working on, uh, getting that out to hire two more additional dispatches. The reason why? Because we want to be, uh, have staffing available in case of emergencies, sick, uh, vacation shortages, uh, the increase in police fire, uh, sheriff's department, nine-one-one calls. Uh, and we got to think about our dispatches. They are our first line of communication. And my goal is to increase the professionalism and the quality of service of our first-line communicators. And the total number of inc, uh, dispatches, uh, once we hire the, uh, two additional, will be, uh, thirteen full-time and one part-time. And starting yesterday, uh, we had four officers that started the, uh, created Criminal Justice Academy. And we have one certified police officer that is in FTO training now. And on July the sixteenth, uh, we continue to, uh, go to job fairs, uh, we're advertising on social media and we'll be at Virginia Career Works in Chesterfield on July the sixteenth, uh, in regards to our recruitment and retention efforts. Next slide. Next slide. Uh, downtown, uh, community engagement. We're continually, uh, downtown with the foot patrols, uh, the business checks, the officers are getting out, they're walking, they're talking to business owners, uh, and also the, the Beacon overtime. We're continuing to have an officer work overtime at the Beacon when they having special events. Uh, traffic enforcement continues with police and sheriff's department on Randolph Road and Appomattox Street. And also we are continuing with the bike patrols downtown. And that'll be continued through the month of July. And, uh, I look forward to the month of August, these summer months that, uh, we're out in the community, riding and engaging. And our community engagement activities, uh, at today, uh, it was at the community center. Uh, we coordinated with, uh, Parks and Recreation. It was called Heroes Day. Uh, West Rock had, had confirmed and they attended and they participated. And we had a good show out and our criminal investigations unit, that whole unit was out participating. And I think they had a real good time. Although it was hot, but had a good time. On July the twenty-sixth, we'll be partnered with Parks and Recreation. It'll be called Community Appreciation Day. It'll be at Mathis Field. Uh, the times will be from four P.M. to seven P.M. And police department will be cooking hamburgers and hot dogs on the grill for the community. And, uh, community engagement officers, we're partnering and we're working, we're communicating and working with H.R.A.J. And he will be, uh, attending the monthly, uh, H.R.A.J. Commissioners Meeting. And the next meeting is scheduled for July the fourteenth. And National Night Out, um, it's going to be October the seventh. This is because of what the block captains want. And so they will be meeting on August the fourteenth to, uh, discuss National Night Out and finalize the plan. But it will be in October, October the seventh. And my, our community, our crime reduction and traffic enforcement, what are we looking for? What's our plan for the summer months? And this is our plan. We will have additional officers working during the peak hours. Also, we'll be, uh, be conducting the outdoor roll calls in different areas of the city. Officers will be conducting foot patrols in business and residential areas, uh, engaging the citizens and handing out brochures about crime prevention tips, uh, how to report crime, uh, how to report crime solver tips. And also they're looking at addresses. A lot of the addresses not visible or missing markers and that we're going out and then letting them know the importance of having their address visible. And the speed trailer, uh, we have a speed monitoring device. And the information trailers will be placed in different areas of the city so we can, uh, inform the citizens on, uh, what's going on with the police department, uh, safety tips, and also, uh, monitoring speeding. And one of the other areas besides, you know, we talked about downtown and all the issues. And one of the other areas besides, you know, we talked about downtown and all the issues we have, the speeding. But we, another issue is Dublin Street and O-line Road, that we'll be focusing on those areas of the city. And with the updated city ordinance and we updated our pursuit policy. And this week, we are training our officers on the new pursuit policy before it goes out. We want to make sure, ensure all our officers know about this pursuit policy and it'll be completed this week. And this will give us more authority to enforce those reckless driving, the ATVs and the dirt bikes and the mini bikes on the city streets. And also, we have planned some several interdictions. The dates will be determined and that will consist of selective traffic enforcement, focusing on reducing criminal activity and also serving outstanding warrants. So that is our plan for the summer. And this concludes my crime summary for the month of July and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we have eleven vacancies and that is down from where we were, isn't it? Yeah, I mean, I just think that's a really positive, some positive news. I mean, everyone says, oh, it's still eleven vacancies, but that is significant, a significant improvement, so thank you for that. I wondered, I, I wondered, I know that here in the city, we don't have a traffic division per se. And wondered if that is something that has been, has ever been, you know, have we had that in the city in the past? Is it something that we're looking at? I know that a lot of other surrounding jurisdictions do have that. And so many of our, so many of the things that you mentioned do have to do with, you know, speeding, traffic control, you know, the ATVs, all of that kind of thing, and I wondered if you had any thoughts on that.
That is one of our goals.
Is it really?
One of the goals.
When you get full, yeah, okay.
And in the interim, that, you know, we're using overtime.
Sure.
To focus on the project.
Yeah, I just, I just wondered if that, thank you so much, I've never asked that question, but I appreciate that. And thank you for all that you're doing. And even in my neighborhood, my son came by, he said, there, there, there are people on bikes, you know, in the neighborhood. And so, you know, thank you for all that y'all are doing to be out in all of the various parts of the city, we appreciate it. Thank you so much, Chief.
Can I have a comment?
Okay, we'll do Counsel Holloway first and then we'll do you, Counsel Stokes.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, you're good, okay. Okay, Counsel Stokes, all right, so Counsel Stokes, Holloway, and then Day.
Thank you, Chief, for a thorough report. I just would like to make the comment that on this past Fourth of July weekend, they had the Heights reunion. And I thought, and it was all the way down Dublin Street, and I think it was two nights. I thought that the police officers did a very good job of monitoring the situation. Of course, the sponsors had a thing called water guns, not guns. And they really had a very positive experience. And I, I watched as the officers drove through and just wanted to commend them on, on being neighborly, you know what I mean? So Chief Taylor, continue what you're doing. I like the interaction of the officers with our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Counsel Holloway?
I was going to kind of speak to the same thing, I had no clue that she was going to speak to the same thing. The police came in in such a, a way where they were able to get done what they needed to get done without any, you know, force, it, it was just done nicely professionally and I see that on your arm. And that was done magnificently. I was, it was, I lost my thought, it was something. Vice Mayor said.
The traffic.
Oh, yeah, I actually had asked that question last year and I was talking about the same thing. And one of the major thing was the lack in officers and them having to pull out and some leave the police station and go out. So I am very glad to know that there's more hiring and so forth. Especially with our safety officers, with the police officers, officers and fire and EMS. Those things are most important when it comes to our citizens' safety. So thank you again for everything you've done.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, go ahead.
So thank you for a very comprehensive report on crime in the city. What's the soundbite? What do you want people to know about where we are in the state of safety in, in Hopewell at this time, based on the report?
Based on this report, the soundbite is community policing, partnership, working together. Police work with all the departments, all the directors. It's just not us alone, it's a collective partnership that we work together with Public Works, Fire, Parks and Recreation, Public Works, we, we just all work together to solve issues within the city. And having our officers to go out in the community and get out of their vehicles and ride the bikes and walk the neighborhoods and talk and be engaged with our community partners and neighborhood watch and building that trust and continuing to earn that trust. We have to earn it and it's a good, when we earn that trust, when we keep that trust and we just continue to work together to solve issues within the city of Hopewell.
And might I add to it too, I forgot to applaud also your working relationship, not only with those departments, but also the Sheriff's Department, which we see out quite a bit more as well with you all. So that's been an actual positive inside of the community to the Sheriff's Department. Some of those guys and gals, respectfully, their, their attitudes are good and top of the line when they come together and collaborate inside of the neighborhoods. Thank them as well.
Counsel Day and then Counsel Ellis.
I wanted to ask, I've noticed that we don't seem to have as many ATVs and dirt bikes out. I'm probably not seeing a lot. Do you feel like the ordinance has helped, that that's maybe part of the reason why?
Yes, and also that, I think the word has got out that we preparing to come after you. If you ride these dirt bikes and ATVs in the City of Hopewell, you'll be held accountable. So it's good that it's decreased, but we still moving forward to, if we do have issues in our neighborhoods, we will be able to address them and hold them accountable.
I also wanted to say, I've spoken to a couple of people that I talk with that are living in Piper Square. And, you know, they're seeing some changes and there are some positive changes and they appreciate, you know, what your officers doing. And I just want to say thank you for that because I'm happy to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Ellis?
Just want to say thank you, Chief. I'll tell you, you've been here a long time and you, you have the want to make it succeed. So I really appreciate you. I remember sitting with you, I might have been eight years old down on Broadway, we were running traffic radar. And you went over everything with me and I have no clue what you were talking about. But I remember that when you were a patrol officer and, you know, standing up here now as Chief, I appreciate you.
Thanks, sir, I appreciate you, appreciate it, thank you.
Chief, one, one last thing, you mentioned National Night Out. I think in our first meeting, I asked you if you were going to do one in this town this year and you said yes. So I'm glad to, glad to know that, that those plans are proceeding. I've always placed an emphasis on that because it's a tremendous opportunity for community engagement across the city. So I'm glad that it's one scheduled in our total, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, two more comments. One, on your, on the table is a budget book of the appropriated adopted budget. As a manager, I believe that council ought to have a hard copy. In spite of all of the digital, you know, tools that we have. I told Ms., Ms. Jordan that let's print them a copy and so I hope you'll use it, keep up with it.
We will, thank you.
The Columbia Gas Line project you asked about a couple of meetings back, that, that project is proceeding. And we expected paving, the lines have been laid, that's been finished. The paving will continue through July fourteenth and, but it'll be done. So that, both on New York Avenue and Dublin Street in that area. So that's one of the discrete projects that's, you've been concerned about that is, that is progressing.
All right, and I do want to give a shout out to, and I'm going to get the name right this time, Mr. Crocker, not Mr. Campbell, but really thinking outside the box, you know, on this and, you know, working with Columbia Gas and, you know, creating a partnership where we're not just getting a patch job, but where we're fixing utilities and once we're done, we're getting whole streets paved and really, you know, sprucing up neighborhoods. And, you know, because of that, you know, we're able to have another, you know, sizable paving investment of about, what was it? About a million and a half, about what you said? One point three million dollars of additional paving in the city. So I really do appreciate all that you're doing and keep up that good work because stuff like that will get us back on to that, you know, just gold standard that I would love to see one day where we on the fifteen-year paving schedule for the entire city.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Thank you for the Mesa Drive patch there, Jackson. I don't have to, you know.
All right, we're going to move into communications from citizens. First one that we have signed up tonight is Mr. Ed Hauser. And as he's coming up, will you please read the statement?
A communication from citizens period limited in total time to thirty minutes is part of the order of business at each regular council meeting. All persons addressing the council should approach the microphone, give their name, and if they reside in Hopewell, their ward number and limit comments to three minutes. No one is permitted to speak on any items scheduled for consideration on the regular agenda of the meeting. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Any questions must be asked through the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, abusive, or slanderous statements or incite disorderly conduct in council chambers may be barred by the mayor from further audience before council and removed, subject to appeal to the, to a majority of council. See rules four oh five and four oh six.
Ed Hauser, Ward Five, one thing I think we're not taking into consideration, we have four counselors up here deciding they want to do what they want to do when we have seven counselors on City Council. These four counselors deciding to do what they want to do is giving the city a black eye. And I don't need to tell you how many times we get in black eyes, but the latest is a six-point-eight-million-dollar lawsuit y'all forwarded and created. The neat part of that though is, it's not all coming out of Hopewell, y'all better dig deeper.
Next is Ms. Sharah Fuller.
Good evening, Council and Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Sharah Fuller and I live in Ward Five. I will start with a little joke because I appreciate the chief for skipping over Neighborhood Watch. That, that slide was a little, it was a little important, but I guess I'm here yourself.
We had a running bet about that.
Okay, thank you. But I do want to say, the chief does always actually support us. So all jokes aside, he does a phenomenal job supporting us as well as Hopewell Police Department. So the joke is definitely not personal, so thank you, Chief. I definitely want to say thank you to the fine folks with Planning and Development, Public Works in Stormwater, Ms. Ginger Holland, Healthy Families, Hopewell Sheriff's Department and their deputies, the Treasurer, Ms. Shannon Foskey, and Hopewell Police Department for coming out, speaking and sharing information with our neighbors. They have consistently come out to our Neighborhood Watch meetings, which by the information they've been able to give, it's actually helped neighbors with different things that they didn't know that the city offered in whether resources or just opportunities that's been out there, including the Ridesaver Program that Mr. Rupert mentioned. And it was actually a phenomenal turnout. The neighbors were very, very happy to hear the clear information about the changes coming to Stormwater, the Triad Program being started by the Sheriff's Department, the communication options the city offers that Ms. Holland shared, the steps that the city is going through to make better, to fix the current codes that we have within code enforcement and being able to proactively pay on your personal property taxes over the year, as well as the crime statistics. And I must say, they enjoyed Stormwater so much, they asked for me to get Mr. Crocker to come back out. However, they actually want to talk to them about the wastewater treatment plant. And I have a five and a three-year-old who are talking about poop a lot right now, so, no offense, I do not want to hear about poop for an hour. So I am not asking you to, I'm so sorry, I do not want to hear that. But I'll send my three and a five-year-old over to you, so. But, but they really, really have been appreciative. But by inviting out all the directors in the various divisions, little by little, we've been able to improve the relationship between the city and the neighbors because as we already know, things are already tense. And the best way that we can relieve this tension is by better communication. And it doesn't have to start at the top, but someone has to start it. And I'm, I'm not at the top, I'm just Ward Five's Neighborhood Watch Captain, I'm just a regular person. But I'm trying my best to make things better. And Ms. Aiken attest to it, I try to give her update every opportunity if something's going on. I try to communicate with her so that way she's in the loop of different things that's happening. So it's not like I'm bowling over City Council, I, I try to communicate. The next Neighborhood Watch meeting will be Monday evening at Powers Baptist Church. It will be for Ward Three. And then the next one will be for Ward Four. That one will be at Hopewell Police Department Headquarters, both of them are at six PM. And Mr. Semitelli from Planning and Development, Stormwater Divisions, he will be out there to go over the changes coming to the Stormwater Division. But I just wanted to put all that information out there, if anyone has any questions, we do post on Facebook. We do go live with our Neighborhood Watches on Facebook for those who are shut in. They don't have to feel like they're being left out of information, but we're trying our best to reach and we will be going door-to-door here soon to give out flyers for all the Neighborhood Watch groups that are in the city. So there is now, technically, there are six Neighborhood Watches and one of the wards, or two of the wards, Wards Two and Six have actually joined. So we've done our best and we're still working. And I do appreciate the relationship with Hopewell Police Department because it wouldn't be as great as it is if they weren't working so hard with us. Thank you, sorry.
I got just a quick question for you. By any chance, during y'all's meeting, did y'all talk any about the, and Mr. Crocker, you might be able to answer this, the Heretic Avenue Project over there? You didn't, okay.
So I came to one of our previous ones, our Stormwater Manager was there last night.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Josh Semitelli and also Mr. Ward was gracious enough to come out. And we had Mr. Todd and I might, I'm forgetting his last name, but Mr. Hawks, so we had him out.
Only reason I ask, I know that that was, that's a project that, you know, that we're working on, trying to get some funding for. And, you know, I remember, you know, a couple of years ago, you know, a lot of citizens coming with concerns about sinkholes that resulted from that. And so, you know, maybe next time that you guys have your meeting, maybe just give them an update on, on that.
I do know that Mr. Crocker was very informative about, I guess he, they would like to do a city assessment because there's a lot happening in our roads and I know he's working on it and everyone's working to better things. So I, I definitely am not trying to diminish the hard work that they're, that they are doing because every department is doing a lot and they're doing a great job. So I definitely want to give a kudos to all of our directors. I know people see stuff online, but they don't see how hard they're really working. And for Mr. Crocker alone, for him to be over two divisions, and I'm sorry, I would have bags, like multiple bags looking like I came fresh from Food Lion. And he's over here like, this is a compliment, he's over here fresh-faced. I have five children and I'm, I'm tired, so I applaud Mr. Crocker for even being able to stand. But they're doing a phenomenal job. People don't give them credit for how hard they're working and then they're staying late to come to these meetings to talk to citizens. And sometimes those citizens are not nice, we ain't gonna lie, I'm just going to say it for what it is, they are not nice.
Mr. Crocker, that's a, that's your Kevi for raise right there.
And I do appreciate Ms. Holland because she did come out with the communications about the community spotlight. And every person that I've asked to come out, they've made it a point to be out there. to answer questions, be straightforward, as transparent as possible. And it's made things so much better. Last night, we had thirty-two people in attendance in person, and a hundred and two people viewing online. So.
That's wonderful.
That's great.
This is Ward Five.
I'll leave you with one funny thing, you know, you talk about your kids being interested, uh, in, you know, poop. The wastewater treatment plan is hiring, so, you know, that's some early recruitment right there. Start training them early. We need operators. All right, uh, we don't have anyone else signed up, uh, to speak tonight. Uh, moving on to our public hearing. Can you read the statement, please, as Mr. Ward comes up? Oh, I apologize. I'll save you a little bit here. Each person addressing council shall step to the microphone, give their name, locality, phone number, and limit comments to three minutes or less. No person shall be permitted to address council a second time until all others have been heard once, and no one shall speak more than twice on any subject in any one meeting. Uh, remarks shall be addressed to council as a body and not to any member thereof, no person other than council. And the person having the floor shall enter into any discussion either directly or through a member of council without permission of the mayor. No question, uh, shall be asked of a council member, including administration, except through the presiding officer.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
When we were on the last portion, I don't know if that, were you trying to get, was she trying to get up and say something when you were calling? Were you trying to get up and address the city? You.
Okay. Okay. All right, go ahead, Mr. Ward.
Uh, good evening, you may remember this application from about a month ago. Uh, this is the conditional use permit request to construct a single-family dwelling on nonconforming lot zero one four, one two five two on Klingman Street. Because, uh, at the first public hearing, action was tabled. Uh, state law requires that we publish and advertise for another public hearing. So that's why I didn't come back to you two weeks after that due to advertising schedule. That's why we're here tonight. Uh, just to, uh, on the quick background here, this applicant is Landova Properties. And the owner of the property in question is Richmond Wholesale Deals LLC, located Ward Five and Zoned R two. Uh, these are the old school maps, um, that we were doing. Uh, general location on the left and a close-in aerial view on the right. Again, it is R two, the minimum standards are seventy-five feet wide, seventy-five hundred square feet. This particular parcel is fifty feet wide and forty, forty-two hundred and fifty square feet. Applicant's proposing a two-story dwelling, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bath, one thousand four hundred and fifty-six square feet, with the elevations front and right side on the slide, and the rear and left side. It is, uh, a bit larger than the other properties in the neighborhood, about two hundred and some square feet. They're actually just under two hundred additional square feet. Vinyl siding, that's consistent with other homes. And it will meet all district setbacks as required by the ordinance. Staff recommends approval. These were the standard, uh, conditions that have been on the ones previously. Uh, Planning Commission did recommend denial of this request. At their public hearing, um, the recommendation is four to one, uh, to deny. The Planning Commission, the two arguments were that the lot was too small and that the house was not consistent with other properties in the neighborhood. Um, we did have some public comment, both at the Planning Commission public hearing and at your public hearing a month ago. Um, adjacent property owner, uh, is against the application as well. We did not receive any other additional comment. Um, I added this, uh, image here for tonight's presentation, it was not in the one a month ago. It's just to point out that the parcels with the red stars are the same width. They're the, they're fifty-foot lots. And, um, the ones in blue are sixty, or between sixty and sixty-three feet wide. So, a fifty-foot wa, uh, wide lot, which is the one outlined in blue, is not that unusual for this area. Granted, it is smaller. On the right, yes, yes. They appear to also be fifty feet wide, you're correct. The ones that don't have stars that are across from each other, those are, those are pretty significantly larger parcels. I think they're sixty-five. Yes, sir. I am available for any questions, I don't believe the applicant's here tonight. So, yeah, if you have any questions, I'm available.
Okay.
Which one, this, this one here?
Yes. Definitely a much, uh, better look at it. Um, especially with, looking at a person, you can't tell what's going to be cut off of the green area and if here's the deposit entirely too small. But with this area view, I, I think that it is, is not so much different than the rest of the neighborhoods. And ultimately, as the mayor was speaking on the, uh, previous, a previous, uh, conditional use permit earlier, that, uh, this is an actual increase in size. Looks like it's bettering the space, which is, according to what I was saying, according to the mayor, everything spoke to earlier, that the best thing would be to better neighborhoods. So, I think I actually, uh, if these people, if they want a smaller lot, it's like somebody, I think, choosing between condominium and, uh, choosing a living, single-family house. And, you know, that's there.
I'd definitely be forward in this case, thank you. And, and your recommendation again was?
Mine is to approve, Planning Commission is, is to deny.
And there's, is just based upon their personal opinion that it was too small? But they also, prior to, didn't have this area view either to have the understanding?
We did discuss, we, it was pointed out at Plan, at Plan and Commission.
Okay. All right, thanks so very much for that.
Yes, sir.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Uh, I don't have anyone signed up for this public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this public hearing?
Good evening, Robert Cutler. Um, I'm the neighbor, Ward Five, that is beside this. Um, I'm not understanding the, 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 trying to figure out the best wording for it, but either way. Um, as I stated before, yes, it would infringe on my privacy. Aside from the fact that there's not another two-story house in that neighborhood for at least three to four blocks, that lot is entirely too small, I'm sorry. I thought, from the last, um, meeting where this issue came up, that you all were supposed to ride through and take a look at it. And you all did that, I'm not understanding how you can honestly sit up there and say that, prerogative or not of the owner, that it's gonna make sense to have that home there. I'm just not seeing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, is there? Let's close the public hearing real quick. Is this what you wanted to speak on?
No, something different.
Okay.
Do you mind speaking?
This is strictly just on the public hearing. Okay. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna close the public hearing. All right. See, at this time, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit, um, as stated and presented by Director Ward.
The motion dies for a lack of a second. Um, is there a motion, uh, to deny the conditional?
Some of, some of.
Okay, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner, is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Counsel Ellis. Uh, discussion. Um, I will say that this, this one was a hard one, um, you know, personally for me because I do believe in, you know, trying to expand out, um, you know, housing size, um, you know, and improving aesthetics. But, I mean, I, I do have to, you know, agree with the Planning Commission's analysis that I just think it's extremely tight through there. Um, and, you know, that's, that's just me personally. Um, I do like the fact that, you know, that they are, we got people that are interested in Hopewell that are, you know, looking to, you know, build and build bigger homes. Um, but unfortunately, this is one that I'm gonna have to stray away from my normal, um, logic of, uh, voting. Counsel Day and then Counsel Holloway.
Uh, I came to the meeting the night that, um, the Planning Commission discussed this. And, you know, some of their concerns were, you know, also, you know, the driveway issue and kind of having to put it right there in front of the house because there wasn't, you know, a whole lot of area, um, to put it there. But I, that is my ward, and I have spoken to some of the neighbors. And I know you've been here a couple of times. Um, and, you know, they're just not happy with it, you know. Some of it's the size of the lot, but, um, several people are unhappy about, you know, just being a two-story. And, you know, the fact that they feel like this is a taller home and, you know, they're gonna kind of be looked down on, you know, from upstairs. You know, they just feel like it's kind of a privacy issue because there's not any other two-story houses right around there. Um, and that's just the feedback that I've gotten, so. That's my comment.
Okay, uh, Counsel Holloway?
I, I was just about to speak on the same thing. That part I was about to ask, if we could ask that gentleman a question of what he commented on, but he got walked past. That's obviously what I was spoken to, so I, I would take that at an agreement.
Okay. Uh, seeing no other lights, roll call, please.
Counsel Stokes?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Harris, did you have your light on?
Yeah, my.
Oh, go ahead.
That one sometimes doesn't work, I used to be down there and it sometimes, sometimes it doesn't work.
No, I just got one call. I wanted to ask, why, why is it that, uh, you're approving this? Against what it is that the, uh, Planning Commission is not approving?
So, my original recommendation was to approve, just simply based off, the direction that I felt I was receiving from council. And that is new, larger homes, uh, larger than the average size. Um, I personally don't think the lot is too small. I, I live on a, my house is on a rather large lot. I wish it was a much smaller lot because I hate cutting the grass. Um, so, I'm, I'm right there. Uh, but, you know, we can have a difference of opinion. And, uh, that's the way this is supposed to work, so. I wasn't gonna change my recommendation after the Planning Commission, I just didn't feel that was appropriate. I, um, my recommendation stayed the same, but, um, it's just we have a, a difference of opinion and that's the way this works. It's the way it's supposed to work. Did I answer your question or?
Yeah.
Okay.
But there's, there's nothing safety, it, this is just, uh, you know, this type of thing is, I guess, like you said, everybody has a difference of opinions, but it, it kind of is a little bit intrusive in a way, I, I think. Because, you know, somebody might like a townhome and the next person next over may not, you know, like the decision of a townhome.
Absolutely.
And I don't think that honestly, that this infringes on, on anybody. I mean, there's plenty of two-story houses right beside, I mean, even in, you know, plenty of neighborhoods right beside single-level homes.
Right.
And, you know, stop people from building. But again, respectfully, you know, we respect the opinions of everybody. But, like you said, seeing from the area view, there are plenty of other lots that are smaller. So, I, I think this is just a, a matter of personal preference and opinion. And, um, like I say, we respect everybody's opinions on, on, on that. Um, but most, most certainly, um, I think that's important, uh, is th- this gentleman who showed up several meetings, and, uh, the other neighbors. And that's the most important thing.
It is, I agree.
Even though my opinion is that, hey, if they want a small lot, I think most imperative is those who are in that neighborhood. So, I'll be voting, voting accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel Ellis?
Yeah, I just want to say, um, you know, Counsel Holloway is right, it's the neighbor. Of course, you know, he's, you know, feeling that it's gonna, you know, interfere with him. But I did ride by there numerous times, just to make sure. And when you look at it, it's, I think the curve of the road throws you off. You're looking at other houses that are on straight blocks.
Right.
Even though the size is the same as those, I think that curve and that road right there just gives it an awkward presentation for, for, you know, for that.
Right.
I don't, I, I think the lot, size, but I think where the lot is, is, is the problem. That, that's just me personally. Yeah, so, you know.
It's definitely not the most desirable lot in the city of Hopewell. That's for sure.
Seeing no other questions or comments, roll call, please.
Counsel Stokes?
And I think Planning got it right, no.
Oh, wait.
The vote?
The, the vote for this is a denial, so yours is yes.
So.
Counsel Stokes?
No.
Wait. You said Planning got it right, but you said, no, this is a different motion. So are you saying that they, they should be able to build?
No.
Okay, so.
I don't think they should be able to build.
So your vote is yes.
So you want to vote yes to deny.
Okay.
Counsel Stokes?
So what am I voting, yes?
Yeah, that's right.
Counsel Ellis? Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counsel Holloway?
Yes.
Counsel Day?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to R one.
Oh, I know what I missed, they changed, yeah, okay. All right.
I'm sorry.
That's the same thing.
Before we do this, because we misunderstood when the.
Okay.
I'd like to make them, I guess, I'll say, I'd like to make a motion to allow the lady to speak. Uh, would you like to still speak, uh, to give her the three minutes to speak?
Okay. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
You can come on up. Can I get a roll call, please?
Counsel Stokes?
She doesn't, she can't see it, so.
Okay, where are we now? I, I'm confused.
We're allowing a, a young lady to, uh, make some comments, uh, during communications from citizens. Uh, she got confused between, uh, that and the public hearing.
Oh, okay, yes.
Counsel Ellis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counsel Holloway?
Yes.
Counsel Day?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay.
Good evening.
Evening.
I am Liz from Ward Six. I am the pop club coordinator for the Hopewell Downtown Farmers Market. And I'm here to invite you all to please visit us so that you know what we're doing and how we're moving our community forward and creating a community. We would absolutely appreciate your support by being there and talking to your constituents and letting them know that you do support them by coming to our market. Support our local vendors and support our community just by showing up. We would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Chad, do you have control of the screen or do I? Uh if you can scroll down. Yeah, there you go. That's good. Uh good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. My Crocker, Director Public Works. Uh you may recall, um it's probably been a couple of months ago now, I came to council with a request from an applicant for a um essentially the, wanted a waiver from the streets code. Uh this, this is a very similar request by a different entity. In the event of a lot that borders an unopened street, there's a provision in the city code that allows council to grant a waiver um to the applicant uh for street and curb improvements, provided that they have frontage on another street. Uh this particular property and the last one, we're both located on Maryville Avenue. Uh this lot has access to Maryville. It has fifty feet of road frontage. It happens to border the corner of Wakefield Street unimproved. Uh the property would not need access to Wakefield Street in order to be viable. Um it is worth mentioning that it will need to go for, uh through the conditional use um process with planning and development. Um however, we see no reason why um the waiver shouldn't be granted for this. Uh the property is under contract. Trek Properties LLC is the contract holder at this point. Time is of the essence for their contract to move forward with purchase. This is just one step in their hurdle. Again, the next step will be the C U P process. Um and I'm happy to answer any questions. There is a diagram included um that shows the subject lot along with uh some elevations that they've proposed of what they may build, um which will also, again, follow suit with the conditional use permit process.
Uh the only uh question, uh not a question, but more of a comment. Um and this might be for you, Mr. Ward, when it comes your way. Um you know, if we, you know, do grant the waiver, which, I mean, you know, I'm, you know, willing to help, you know, folks and whatnot. Um especially, you know, with the staff recommendation. And that we do ask, you know, that, you know, when you're communicating with them, that they can make the sizes, you know, a little bit larger than, you know, the average in the neighborhood. Yeah. Okay. Alright, uh there are no other questions or comments. Um do I have a motion to approve the uh street code waiver for seventeen-twenty-nine Maryville?
So move.
Alright, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by uh Council Ellis. Any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Council Stokes?
Yes.
Council Ellis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Council Harris? Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Council Day?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, uh moving on to R Two, Ms. Jordan. Bring us home.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty-six budget to fund an additional assistant Commonwealth attorney position for the Commonwealth Attorney of Virginia. These funds will be provided by the state of eighty-five thousand dollars. Um general funds of twenty-one. This does not maneuver, uh manipulate any of the already adopted bottom-line dollars. This is money that was already uh um allocated for a part-time position. We just reallocated it for the Commonwealth Attorney's position. So it's no additional money coming from the general fund for this position. It's already been appropriated.
Okay. Alright, is there a motion to um approve the resolution uh as presented for the Commonwealth Attorney one position?
So move.
Alright, motion's been made by Vice Mayor Joyner and seconded by Council Day. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh roll call, please.
Council Stokes?
Yes.
Council Ellis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joyner?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Council Day?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Alright, uh that concludes tonight's uh city council meeting. Meeting is adjourned.